We're gonna go last week and we didn't, so we're going this week. Come down and see.
Okay, so meetings, call to order at 6:31. And roll call of members, Mike Ahearn, Chair, John Rienlet, Vice Chair, Paul Wilson, Pat Roach, John Kelly, Bob Dragon has been excused, Dick Lewis, Selectmen's representative. Brings us to item number three, public comments, which I see no public. Brings us to item number four, administrative matters. And we're gonna look at the minutes from 8:02, 12:00, 8:30, 12:00, 9:06, and 9:20. So we have quite a few pages here to possibly go through much quicker. Everybody's gotten this in the mail. Maybe people have made notes on pages, so we will try and go as quick as we can. If you see a note that you have on any particular page, just raise your hand. Page one or two of August 2nd? Three or four? Five or six?
Five, second paragraph, first line. Sharon Penny stated in the interim, "Before meeting with the blackie."
Oh, me.
It's old English.
Old English.
Must be "the" blackies, plural.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. With the blackies, okay. Good.
Page six.
I have one more. On the next to the last paragraph, says John Rienlet commented, he thought what was happening were defining active. I don't know.
Was the question of defining active and substantial, or was the act of? This is what I mean.
He thought what was happening, maybe we were defining active. I don't know.
How would you like to read that?
When I agree with this.
I'm sure it's, yeah, well, that's what I mean about the fractured.
Yeah, right.
Syntax.
It doesn't. I mean, that was the only thing I saw.
John Rienlet commented that what he thought was happening.
The issue was to define active and substantial.
Was the issue of defining active and substantial. Missing some modifiers here.
Page six? Seven, and the last page, eight. Make a motion?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Lewis, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And I abstain because I was not present at that meeting.
Thank you.
That brings us to the minutes of August 30th. Anything on page one? I have one thing. Mike, the middle of that second paragraph, Mike Ahearn recalled, "Planning Board experience that there had been many Planning Board meetings and public hearings not held on the first and third Thursday." And I believe my intention, and I just want to clarify this, site visits, I don't know if those are considered meetings or public hearings, but we do take attendance, and that's was my thought.
They're site visits with attendance, but they're, so I guess I don't understand why you bring that up, or what's the context?
In the thought, when I made that statement, I don't know if I said many, and probably I did, but when I thought of Planning Board meetings, I was thinking at that time when I made that statement, I was thinking site, Planning Board meetings.
So such as? I mean, I don't know, I'm not trying to tell you what to say.
No, I didn't say, I never said site plan, but I did say, you know, we've had meetings. There haven't been many that are off from our first and third.
There have sometimes.
There's been a few.
But I remember John Rienlet running the meeting over by Loon Lake, and we voted and made some decisions to approve the site plan at that meeting, and so I'm just thinking site plan meetings, so.
And sometimes we've moved the meetings, so you could say sometimes.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to, I just, that was just my thought saying, I don't want to change anything in the meeting. I'm sure that's maybe the word I used.
Well, it's.
You just get rid of the word many, is it okay? You say there have been Planning Board meetings and public hearings.
I don't want to remove it if I didn't, if I.
Say it. That's the problem with correcting minutes. We don't want to revise history.
Yeah, I know, it's.
Because I point out that in the first sentence.
Not the exact science.
In the first sentence of that very same paragraph, so if I could now just make a comment.
Sure.
Challenges made by a citizen that this particular public hearing date was not a regularly scheduled meeting, and therefore not a legitimate venue. A venue is a place, it's not a time. So I think that the challenge was to the time of the meeting, not to the place of the meeting.
Good point.
Because this is the normal place.
Right.
But again, I don't know what.
Well, I didn't write that, so that could have come from, as I said.
Not from what somebody said.
But you've got a transcriptionist who's hearing stuff and interpreting, so it gets.
And the time is always, you know, we've had different times for that.
Oh, yeah.
For the site plan visits, I mean, but again, we take, we have to notify in advance those site plan visits, right? I would think.
Well, it's, yeah.
So I don't want to change anything, I just wanted to point out that that was my thought. So, anyway, page two. Three? Four? Five? Six? Nine? And 10. Motion?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes as drafted.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roach, all those in favor of accepting the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Brings us to September 6th. Any changes on page one or two? Three or four? Five or six?
Third paragraph from the bottom. About the middle of the paragraph, it said, "People come to New Hampshire to get away from SQUALOR." I don't know what that is.
Squalor.
Squalor.
But where is that, on page six?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, to get away from squalor, yeah.
Okay. That's, I've never heard that term used.
Well, maybe the.
If that was the word that was used.
I think, well, yeah, I didn't add that in. I think.
There's a difference in sprawl and squalor.
Maybe it was misheard. It could have been misheard, so I could probably check.
I don't know.
Yeah, squalor would suggest.
Garbage.
A slung, decrepit.
Well, maybe that's one man's opinion.
Well, I'll just add that to my vocabulary there.
He could have said squaw, I can't remember, to be honest.
Well, this isn't verbatim, so I would perhaps suggest that we put sprawl, I don't know, or, I don't know, give me a word.
People can usually get away from squalor, you know.
I can't remember.
Yeah.
I can't remember.
It is harsh, but again, we can't revise history, so I, I don't know, it's worthwhile to check the.
Okay.
Oh, listen to that tape, swatch that, so.
So you should know the answer to that.
I will check, oh, well, it's up to you. And you can't move it if you wait.
I don't think it's crucial.
No.
No, okay. Page seven? Page eight?
I just thought there was a misspelling there.
It's like "the," it's not used very much in common.
Yeah, it's not a common word.
I'll have to try to find a way to use it and advance my vocabulary.
Talking about chomping past things, then you're okay.
Nine or 10?
If we could just, on page eight, third paragraph up from the bottom, that had to do with this letter that was read into the record. I think it was from Mr. and Mrs. Armstrong, and it was about the Bachelders, and in here I say I spoke regarding the letter, and said it contains errors, so that's all true. But the sentence, I'm sure I didn't say this, it said, this is like the third to last sentence, it said, "At that time, William Bachelder was not a single owner." He was not, he was not an owner.
Okay.
You know, so the point is that it was owned by a group of people, but he was not one of that group of people.
Sure, well, go ahead and rephrase it, because this just came out as it came out, so if you.
So it's, we could, "At that time, William Bachelder was not an owner."
Yeah, that makes it clear.
That's fine, yep.
Page nine or 10? Page 11? 13? And the last page, 14. Motion?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes as amended.
I'll second.
Mr. Roach, and all those in favor of accepting the minutes of September 6th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. It brings us to the minutes of September 20th. Anything on page one? Or two? Page three or four? Five or six? Seven or eight? Nine or 10? And 12? Motion?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes as drafted.
You can, I'll second.
Second by Mr. Roach, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That brings us back now to item number five, correspondence.
Well, this is not correspondence per se, but this was handouts from the 91A Right to Know Meeting that our town attorney spoke to some of us a couple of weeks ago. So that's just kind of a handy dandy little reference sheet.
Should we pass them that way?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Take through, and you can take that down.
But it's a good reference to have handy.
Yeah.
Of course, then the Attorney General's report, which I'll download and get to, 36 pages of guidance stuff. I think I'll go with this.
To be reviewed later.
Yes, to be taken under advisement.
Brings us to number six, Board of Selectmen Report.
Unfortunately, I was not, I was under the weather, so I missed the 91A meeting, which I wish I'd been able to be there. But I guess just a couple of quick selectmen things. One, the board was very excited to hear about the approval by the Planning Board of the plan for the Business Center, and Val participated in the groundbreaking the other day. And I did mention to them the decision by the board to sort of take a look at the Tenny Mountain Highway Corridor Study, and they're obviously very interested in that, just because of the economic impact of that area and the importance of it to the community, so they'll be following that and interested in that very closely.
Conservation Commission, Mr. Wilson?
Nothing to report.
Zoning Board of Adjustment, Ms. Penny?
Nothing to report. We kind of messed around with the dates a little because we had to take into consideration voting day. So the board will, actually, the zoning board will actually be meeting, I believe it's January 8th, because we have to take into consideration New Year's Day, it's the crazy time of year, but anyway, they're looking at a rehearing, excuse me, a rehearing on an application that was granted, a rehearing regarding billboards, so that'll be interesting.
Water and Sewer District, do we have anybody to?
No, that's out of the grabs.
Pemmitchwassa Local River Advisory Committee, Mr. Kelly?
Yes, the last meeting we had was, it was interesting and very lengthy, and it had a, they had passed out a series of maps that changes of the project from 2001 to 2010. And then they, we haggled for about three hours on the yearly report that they were going to try to put together and put in with the town report. And also, they are going to increase the donations they're asking for from $200 from the town to $250.
Could I just ask a question? John, the maps that they looked at, were those land use changes along the Pemme?
An indication as to the use of the.
Different uses, okay, yes.
Land, yeah. Not to bring them, but.
That's, next time I'll be brave.
So that increase that they talked about will go in front of the selectmen at some point?
At the time, yeah, at the time that they pass out all of the nonprofit organization.
And that money they mainly need to do was funding for the water testing that they do?
Basically, and also the administrative part of their side's paper and all that that just.
Do they do their testing, do you know yet, certain spots in the river to see differences, or they go to different locations?
No, they have one at Blair Bridge, they have one at Linnwall Falls, they have one at the bridge down here. It's interesting, because North Woodstock and Lincoln are not out of the corridor. The corridor starts above that, somewhere in Cobrook, goes down into Lincoln, North Woodstock, and then you skip Lincoln, North Woodstock, and start in, again, in Thornton. And the reason for, obviously, the Woodstock and Lincoln is the ski areas.
Plymouth Regional Emergency Management?
Yes, well, the Emergency Management, you know, committee opened up during Hurricane Sandy, they were based here in the town, and they moved up to police station, and they had the hub available as a shelter if need be, but as we all know, Plymouth and the surrounding there was pretty fortunate, there was no rain, major damage, there was some limbs downs and power outages, but compared to what other parts of the region got, pretty, escaped pretty easily, so all along it was a pretty quiet evening.
We, if I could just add to that, there had been a lot of proactive work by the town in terms of preliminary living and stuff, you probably speak to that before, in anticipation of any other storms and stuff, because we did have such a mess with Irene.
Right.
And that was kind of the Emergency Management team, that was kind of our drill. So we really knew how to hop to it this time, and all the systems worked, the, because we're in touch with Emergency Management in Concord through the web OEC, Office of Emergency Communications, whatever, so it's very, it's real-time stuff updating, you know, incident reports and stuff like that. It was a lot less clunky this time, but we also had a lot fewer issues of concern, so that was good too.
Right, yeah.
Town Planner Report?
Well, as Dick referred to, we, and you know, because you all here, the board gave approval to 149 Main Street. There was some good press on that in fairly recent Sunday edition of Manchester United or Sunday News. Tracy had come and spoken to Brian and myself and Holfredus, and just got a little background on it. It's going to be, it's gonna be a little tricky, the building there, because it's such a constrained construction. Oh, thank you, John, such a constrained construction site, but it's a great gateway project, it spiffs things up, and it's a great partnership, so we're looking forward to it. As you folks have seen and can tell, the construction work, the site development, the true shovel-in-the-ground stuff has started out on Tenny Mountain Highway at Riverside Landing, because they did get their Alteration of Terrain permit on November 30th, so they were poised and ready, and they did not do anything in violation before getting that. Everything they did, you know, was just, you know, cutting brush and stuff that you didn't need. You needed, whatever permits you needed, they had in place, so that's set to go forward. Gosh, I'm trying to think what else. We have a few irons in the fire with economic development, but it's a little ways out there. Not a particular place, it's just courting, shall we say. Also, I have been asked and was appointed to the PSU Master Plan Committee as the liaison for the town to carry information back to you folks and up the chain of command to the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator. Reciprocally, and this is kind of an offshoot of the relationship that we've developed with PSU, with Steve Taxor, and, you know, the different site plans for the museum and the different things, you know, it's a good working relationship. Anyway, they have, they being PSU and the committee, I guess through the task force, I've forgotten the particular details, anyway, they would like to pay us a visit at some point, the process has just barely started, so it's very new, and explain what's going on, what they anticipate to be looked at in the future for the campus, their proposed changes. There's not necessarily anything earth-shattering, but, you know, there will be some facilities upgrades and this and that, and just to, once again, have a bit of cohesiveness in our understanding. So I thought that would be a good idea, because it's always nice to know what's going on in your backyard and vice versa. And kind of in the same vein, I don't, do you folks remember the Shama Project?
The what?
It didn't come before the board, it was a zoning issue. It's a private home out on, excuse me, Hunt Road, but they just had a different approach to things, they had, it's kind of like a family compound, but they had bunkhouses, just simple bunkhouses, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, long story short, it had to go before the CBA, and roundabout, the property is quite near the Bridgewater Town Line. So roundabout, we found that, and it was not regional impact, because it was a private home, on 300-plus acres, so it was, it was very impactful, but there is an obscure RSA that speaks to notification for driving along roads shared by towns. So anyway, that precipitated a dialogue with the Bridgewater Planning Board, and at some point, they would like to meet with you folks and just talk about stuff. The future of, well, no, but I mean, somewhat regional impact, I mean, because Plymouth is a bigger town and has a bigger budget and this and that, I mean, just residential development out there on a small scale, not even subdivision, which of course would be regional impact, you know, if you're increasing traffic along a certain road that goes through another town, you know, it's just that kind of thing, just to see what's on everybody's plate, and I never think that dialogues hurt, at least at the outset, they don't. So those are just some things to be looking forward to in the future. That's all I have for report, per se, I've got some new business, but.
Could we possibly have that done with other towns? Because I was talking to a selectman up in Groton today, and they said there's gonna be 56 wind towers spread out over these local mountains within a very short time, and since Groton got the lion's share of the tax break this time, I wonder if we couldn't talk to other towns and get some kind of a regional type of thing.
Well, I mean, we could certainly, you could do it on an individual town level, town by town, over time, or you could get a small, like a forum going, if you'd like to do that, whatever the board pleases at some point. Perhaps that's something, you know, might dovetail with the selectmen too, but certainly Planning Board to Planning Board is a good way to work for regional.
Was that, where that so-called development out on Hunt Road, was that the old professor's house, do you know?
No, it's all new construction.
There's only two, there's only two, I believe, two houses on that road.
It's new construction, and the gentleman and his wife have put their, quite nice people to work with, and they've put in a gravel road, they've upgraded the bridge on their own, and stuff like that.
Yeah, because I went out in a flood a few years ago.
Yeah, no, this is not a pre-existing dwelling.
Okay, they just, they just bought 165 acres up there, up on Hunt Roads, and people did so.
Yeah, this was 360-something.
This is one of the biggest properties, because there was a Patriot, it's Northern Patriot that owned that land before.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, no one knew. And that was, there was someone from Bridgewater, one of the town officials that spoke to me in July, or that I brought up and.
Yeah, a little out of turn, but we'd rather, yeah, that's right, I remember. You know, it's not a bad thing just to meet with your colleagues from across the property line.
So is that something we'll set up at some point?
Probably the first of the year, yeah, because we, leading into the next item after we get there, we've got a lot of zoning and statutory work ahead of us, so.
Item number seven, the corridor study.
Yeah, I just, I know, I had asked Dick at one of the other meetings where he thought we were in terms of applying for Plan New Hampshire, because if you recall, we were going to do the corridor study and then Plan New Hampshire and kind of get more bang for our buck, and not have to maybe show up $20,000, maybe only 10 or something, five and five, five of which to meet Plan New Hampshire. I just had last year's information, and it looks, if they're following the same schedule, it looks like the call for applications are always in January, do you know if that's the case? I don't see anything current.
Yeah, the communications I had with one of their.
That gal.
Well, no, I spoke with a gentleman architect from Portsmouth, and he had contacted me prior, or after I'd had the communication with the executive director, Robin.
Oh, Robin.
And while they kind of have a normal time for applications, they really do sort of have a rolling opportunity, so he said, just, you know, download the application that is available online, you know, fill it out, flesh it out a little bit, you know, sort of get the board sign off on it, and then get that back to them, and they'll consider it when it comes in.
Okay, well, I just, because we have a lot of work between now and, say, the middle of February with zoning ordinances and stuff, do you think if we got to it in February, we'd be too late?
I think, yeah, I mean, I can, you know, maybe after the first of the year, I could take a look at it and, you know, with you.
I just don't want to, I know it rolls along, the different parts of the year, they have different awards, but I didn't want to miss it, there's one deadline for submission. Because that, my point being with this long windy summation here is, I want to see where we're going with that, so we can flesh out the costs and stuff on the Tenny Mountain Corridor Study, so we can get the RFPs out, so we can get that going. Unfortunately, all this stuff is front-loaded with a lot of bureaucracy and paperwork, and it takes forever, and the budget too, in terms of the town.
Do we need to come up with any type of overall goals that we want to achieve with this study, or is it just pure, what information is out there to?
Well, I, the basic goals are to get an understanding of the currents, in my mind, the current status, see if we can, not we, but whoever works with us on it can extrapolate some need, and then put it all together and come up with a future land use plan slash changes to the zoning ordinance, so, I mean, it's kind of a snapshot at first. Usually the outcomes, you have basic outcomes, but I don't think you want to presume the questions, other than general questions, before you get there, you know what I'm saying?
I thought one of the beginnings was gonna be like a survey of available land and.
Oh, yeah, no, that kind of, yeah, those are the, those are the.
Kind of the beginning steps, right?
How to go.
Is there any way we could put a moratorium about any more buildings out there? Because I've been on this board for, I don't know how many years, maybe five, eight years, and everybody's been treading water on this, and every time we talk about it, there's another building goes up and another building goes up, and if we keep stalling long enough, we won't even have to worry about the corridor, because it will all be filled up with chicken hoses.
Yeah, I think, I think John raises a very good point.
Yeah.
At one time, we said, well, we're not gonna have any more small buildings here, because when CBS came in, they said, well, we're worried about smaller lots, and they don't have to go adhere to all of the mitigations and all that stuff, and we were so worried about that, and now we got two more lots, that are small lots, and then we got another one up on the traffic circle, so, you know, pretty soon, we won't have to worry about a corridor, because there won't be any more corridors left, it will be just small, small businesses that pay maybe a third of the tax, that maybe a large business might do. So I don't, I don't understand, and I say it's been five to eight years, they've been treading water on this thing, and I just don't, I don't understand why we keep delaying it.
Delaying, delaying a corridor? Delaying a corridor study?
The corridor study, yeah. Been talking about both of five...
Have you? Yeah.
Well, I'd like to add to what Mr. Kelly says, and just say that when I drive Tenney Mountain Highway, I count the vacancies, because we've got a lot of empty office space, a lot of empty, a lot of empty buildings along the way, so, that does seem inconsistent, that we're putting up new buildings at the same time that we've got a whole lot of vacancies down there.
If I could address that, I mean, I hate to see empty buildings, too, I think what you, from what I can see, and I'm the new kid on the block, a lot of the big buildings, there are office buildings, aren't those retrofits from the car dealerships that kind of ruled Tenney Mountain, maybe 10 years ago or so?
Yeah, Genesis.
Yeah.
Well, some are.
Right.
How much office space is being taken by those?
Well, I don't know, but that's one of the things that we need to...
One has a trailer sales on it, that used to be the old Buick place.
Reinhardt, yeah.
It used to be the old Dodge place, that's empty.
Yeah.
There's another one that used to be a big repair shop, and that's got boats in it now, and I don't know how many others that you're talking about. But, the problem I find is that the type of businesses that, and I've heard this from people coming into town, that Tenney Mountain is one of the worst-looking roads that they've seen anywhere in New Hampshire, because you've got, I call it the graveyard, I know it's a granite sales place, you've got three or four tin buildings out there, you've got Main's building, which is a total disgrace to the town of Plymouth, so, and...
Which building?
It's the old, across from Harris Brothers, it used to be Main's Insurance Agency.
Oh, yeah.
That's a total disgrace, and now you've got McDonald's and a bank coming in, so, there is absolutely no consistency, there's nothing that has been done, in the last master plan, all they wanted to put out there is tin storage houses and sex shops, and you can see that right in their report, so, you know, it's been at least five years or so, I don't know when the last master plan came out, but, you know, it's just, it's asinine to even talk about the corridor, because we will never probably even have to need it, even if we got behind it and could push it one way or the other, so if we have a moratorium of not putting any more buildings out there, or not putting any more businesses out there until we do it, number one, that would push us somewhat, and number two, we wouldn't have another bunch of 900 and some odd foot commercial buildings up on Traffic Circle.
Well, you need to, you need to, and I am just being the devil's advocate here, you need to tread lightly with the whole moratorium thing, because that, I mean, so we'd have to seriously research that, I mean, you have to have a absolutely compelling...
We haven't done anything so far.
Compelling reason, well, this is the first time I've heard, I've heard, as planner, building moratorium out there.
Somebody should have said it five years ago.
Well, perhaps.
I have a question.
So, go ahead.
How do you even start a moratorium, how do you...
Well, you have to have compelling reasons, like, for example, if you're, you have too many subdivisions in your infrastructure and your schools, you know, way beyond impact fees are becoming too burdensome, so, we'll just put that aside, that's one thing. But, the corridor study, in my mind, should be looking at retrofitting and infill, which is, which is what you're speaking to with these other buildings. Having said that, though, I mean, you're going through a total metamorphosis of car world, for lack of a better term, from whenever, from the 70s or whatever, so, and you've got some very deteriorated buildings, so it's a little bit like urban renewal also, so you've got, once again, all these moving pieces, which should be brought up and studied and looked at in the corridor study, so you can get a policy decision on design review, we've mentioned this a million times too. I mean, if you want design standards, you have to implement design review in your site plan regulations, which say, you must have this, you must have this, you must have that.
And that will eliminate...
We don't, we have, we'd like to see...
We tried out on Main Street, everybody was supposed to have the same facade on the front, that didn't work out too well, even though the banks were forced to loan money at 2% interest to do all that, they didn't do it.
I mean, we could certainly have design standards, I know the business park that I'm in, my company's in a business park, one of the, I don't know what you call it, but one of the covenants of the business park is you can't have a metal building, it has to be a brick, the side facing the road has to be brick.
Well, at least you could do something like that, because what have we got up there? We've got Main's, we've got tin, two or three tin repair shops.
But, that was pre-existing, though.
That's pre-existing, but we certainly could come up with...
It wasn't pre-existing from the time the last...
Master plan.
The last master plan was, and it won't be pre-existing for anything that is left that is open space up there, because if we don't have our regulations...
So, as I understand it, John, you would like to see, as part of this corridor study, design standards for new buildings that would pop up on the corridor?
Number one, I'd like size.
Well, I don't know about size, I like to always say that the market dictates a lot of what goes on, and I kind of like...
The market dictates, because you don't have the regulations to stop whatever is going in there.
And I kind of like small businesses, because I know that it's locally owned, and a lot of, there's a lot of local people that can't own.
But, I'm looking at taxes, Lowe's could pay $500,000 worth of taxes into this town, we need taxes, we don't need nonprofit organizations, we need taxes, I'm sure that McDonald's and the bank are not going to be paying $500,000. I know, I know it's against everybody's grain to have large businesses that come into Plymouth, but I really would like to see the Indian reservations down here on the Peppermint Washington Bank River, but that's not going to happen, people don't want it, okay? And people need the services in Plymouth, they need the taxes in Plymouth, and somewhere, sometimes, somebody's going to figure out that you've only got so much space in the town of Plymouth, so consequently, something is going to have to happen, there's going to be a lot of unpaid taxes in town, and a lot of people moving out of town.
So, I think we're looking at maximizing the taxes for the Tenney Mountain, and possibly some design standards, we're looking at future land use plans, we've implemented some backroad connections between Walmart and...
What they call infill.
Is that the term?
Between existing buildings.
So, we've got...
And retrofitting also, which means...
Existing buildings.
Existing buildings changing.
The only thing, the only places people want to put commercial buildings is on the Fairgrounds Road and Bell Road, okay, up on, on a back road, way up near Hoyt Hill up there, I know most of you don't even know what that, where that is, but you want to put them up there, and believe it or not, you are not going to get the traffic on Bell Road as you are on Tenney Mountain Highway, and no business is going to fail.
Well, if they failed, then a bigger business could come in and buy them out and...
No, because they're so far out in the country, they're so far out in the country that nobody would ever go there.
Oh, okay.
It's a very hard balancing act, and that's why we're always faced with these issues.
My biggest problem is the length of time people have been shuffling their feet to try to do something like that, it's been, the redheaded steps on Main Street went along, and they hit all the new buildings, they hit all the improvement, in fact, they could have put that new development, that university building, if that, for a better word, down on 149 Main, that could have been out on Tenney Mountain somewhere, but they decided to take Main Street out of it, and take and put a nonprofit organization in there.
And that's going to be taxed.
Yeah, it's not nonprofit, it's not nonprofit.
I asked them the other day, I said, could that ever turn into a nonprofit organization? And I believe the town planner, and they said, well, anything changes.
No, I didn't say anything changes.
I was for the university.
But, what I said, if their affiliation with the university, their relationship with the university changes.
Well, read the newspaper.
All right, so what we've got, we've got some ideas that we threw together for what we'd like to see in this new corridor study, we've got some of this, we can put into the application somehow, feed it into it, and then see if we can get some help with money and design.
Yes, I'd also like to add to another obvious piece, and that's some consideration of traffic flow.
Oh, absolutely.
It's already moderately annoying to drive that road.
No, that's, it's extremely annoying.
I'm trying to be kind, and trying to allow for the fact that it may very well get worse, if we don't do any...
No, that's the other main component.
It's going to get worse, you've got those two businesses that come in.
So, we've got some great ideas, I love the maximizing the taxes, I love the traffic flow, we've got a lot of good, Mr. Lewis?
Just, I'll, Sharon said she'd maybe be devil's advocate, that's a role I always like to play.
I'll make this observation, that I would have a hard time supporting, either as a member of the board, or as a member of the board's selectmen, spending more money on a corridor study, until we take a good, long look at the existing study, that time and energy and some level of money was put into. I mean, I spent time reviewing it over the last few days, and 90% of what has been said here this evening is already contained within that study.
But, it's not implemented.
But, nothing has been done with that study, you can study it until hell freezes over, but, you know, it's, if you don't, if you're playing a dam in the river that's flooding all the time, and you never build a dam...
Yeah, but...
They don't die in there.
I mean, I just...
And as I say, the last time they said, all they want is sex shops and warehouses out on Tenney Mountain Highway, because their main thrust was Main Street. So, that was five years ago, and we've been shuffling our feet ever since then, and we're going to be shuffling our feet for the next five years, I'll bet you.
Yeah, I mean, as much as you may be surprised, I agree with you, a lot of what you're saying here, I mean, it's just, it's, I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, you know, the corridor study was a 2003 study, I mean...
It's five years ago.
Almost nothing has been done.
No, that's why it needs to be revisited with the land uses there today.
And I guess my concern is, you revisit it, you come up with the same recommendations, and then nothing happens.
Well, revisit and implement.
And plan to implement is what we need.
And you've got to have an application, and the application is going to take years to get through, and so now you're going to safely go to bed and say, ah, I did my job.
No, we've got apples and oranges here, Plan New Hampshire is one entity, corridor study is separate, they're related.
Why are you combining them then?
Because they cross-support each other, and because we can get more bang for our buck, Plan New Hampshire...
That's why I say put a moratorium, or put something, so that you can't, you know, they stop a national concern, Lowe's, dead in their tracks, they cost them $450,000, and they got zelch out of it, so, why can't we do something to stop all of these hot dog stands that are going up and down this road?
Well, Steve will be...
Well, think about it, and you'll survey it, but you won't do anything about it.
Well, I will, I will, it's not my job, my job is to give you guidance.
There's a whole group of us here, and it's not just Sharon, and it's...
I'm not saying it's Sharon.
No.
I'm saying the town.
And I don't know whether everybody here agrees that maybe we need a moratorium, I just don't know, and it's not really...
I might use the wrong word, I'm just saying, let's stop...
That's moratorium, I guess.
Let's stop the infiltration of little, small buildings that don't give us the tax base that we need, and also, when you go into a federal, a federal type of, no, it's a federal building, but if it's federally regulated, you get 100% better building than you do that 960-foot building out here by the traffic circle.
And I don't think they're real small buildings, because it's got to be a fairly good business to be out on Tenney Mountain Highway, because the property taxes are, I want to understand, pretty high.
That's not 950 square feet out here, the footprint is one thing, it's three stories, so it's the, you know, it's cubic.
All right, let's move on to item number B, upcoming zoning warrant article.
Okay, well, let me just quickly, about this whole corridor study thing, having put this out to Dick, and talked to Dick, who was our point person on this before, I'll be checking with Plan New Hampshire to see when we can get the application in for that portion of it, and that will help get the ball rolling here, to quantify what we need for the corridor study.
And let's also mention that there was, talked about a moratorium, right?
No, I've got it down, we'll match it up.
We'll match it up, John.
Okay.
How do you get onto this so-called corridor committee? I've been fighting for that for eight years now, and I, and everybody else seems to get on this corridor committee, and I don't seem to get on.
I don't understand what you're talking about.
I don't know.
Well, I think the committee is the board right now.
Is the board, yeah, it's just the board's project.
But, you people, you and Penny know all about it, and I don't know what they're thinking.
Dick brought up some information two meetings ago, about a planning group that could help us, and would help with some offsetting a lot of the costs, so...
But, do we have a committee for that? We don't do it, that's just another stall.
There's no subcommittee?
No, there's no subcommittee for the board.
Well, I think all of us pretty much agree that it's very important to this committee.
Yeah, so, I would imagine that the entire board, given the size of it, would be that committee, would want to be on it.
Yeah, definitely. All right, so Sharon and Dick will work on finding out the application process, we'll download it, we'll get started, John, this board will work together to finalize the application that we send out, I'm sure, and...
For that portion, and then this board needs to meet in work sessions to develop the request...
Want to take a side bet on that? Let's go on.
John, please don't be sarcastic, it's really irritating me, because I'm trying to move forward with this.
We're moving on to B, upcoming zoning warrant, yes.
Can I ask one, just really question, I just agree with John one thing, that building that's out there, I don't know what you call it, it's one of its, it's family furniture, how do we go about getting those buildings eliminated, like knocked down?
I don't know, I saw the surveyor out there not that long ago, you know.
Is that part of the plan, and not...
Well, you could always ask one of those bulldozers to make a mistake.
The Blossom Property?
Yeah.
I think that's going, going, gone.
Okay, I mean, it's clearly in violation of our existing rules.
Oh, you can't do anything with it, but tear it down.
Yeah, right, okay.
The surveyor's route there.
Right.
Do you have any regulation that says you got to tear it down?
If...
I do know...
We do, on the book.
John, hold on, hold on, John.
We do have, you know...
If it's the Blossom Property, the public knowledge that it's owned by Michael McGinley, and I don't think he's going to be putting anybody in that house to...
Oh, okay, he owns it, so he'll probably tear it down.
We are moving on now to B.
Thank you.
All right, here is important dates for local officials, this is the town meeting stuff, and it does reference our charge to get the zoning changes on the warrant. So, there's a lot of extraneous information here, it covers everything, but as far as the planning board is concerned, the petition period, the period for petition changes to the zoning ordinance, which come from beyond this board with the general public, that was Monday, November 12th through Wednesday, December 12th, we have thus far, which is the 6th, received two petitions, which I will pass out to you in a bit. We need to, okay, let's see, January, I don't want to bother you with the posting, but, okay, Tuesday, January 22nd, it's on page two, is the last day, the last day that we get to hold our first public hearing on adopting or amending the zoning ordinance, so, we've got to have a meeting by that date, or probably better before that date, so this is just kind of a heads up for everybody's calendars, because it could be a busy time of year. At the bottom of that page, Tuesday, February 5th, is the last day for the planning board to hold a final public hearing on the adoption or amendment of a zoning ordinance, as you know, sometimes the proposed changes to zoning ordinance, whether they're by petition or thereby come from the board yourselves, you have to have discussion on it, you have to end up with a final form of any changes, a word form, text form, by February 5th. So, between January 22nd and February 5th, we'll be having some meetings, hopefully, possibly, we'll see how many petitions we get, we may be having some before, so that's just a heads up, here's your reference for your calendars, I'll worry about the notices and stuff, because that's part of it. We have received two petitions to date, I have copies for you to just take home and save, you're welcome to look at them, they are public documents now, you can't talk to each other... You can't talk to each other about them. You can't have any discussion tonight about them. We can only discuss these as a board, I mean, individually you can with me as the planner. That's legit, if you have any personal concerns or opinions or whatever. But I'm just handing them to you now because they're going to bear some scrutiny and some looking over, so it's a little bit of homework. As I said, we have six more days to get any petitioned amendments in, and we may, we may not. However, that doesn't mean that's all we have to deal with because this board can come up with recommendations to changing, to changes in the zoning. That's where your design review would come in, if you'd like to make that change, add that, well, actually, that site plan, but it's stuff we could talk about. So here's, these look very similar. So I don't know how you want to mark them. You can't discuss them.
No, when can we go?
At the public hearing.
At the public hearing.
Yeah. I'm sorry, which one did I give you? I've already confused myself. Does that say E on it?
Yeah.
E. Okay, E, E, E. I've got one more coming. E.
This is, what? Oh, did you get one?
I just passed it on.
Oh.
Oh, I see. Okay, I thought there were two.
So you need another E.
Okay.
Everyone's got the 710.4E, yes? Because this is 710.1. This is a reference to the existing zoning numbers, so. And I will get copies to, who are we missing? Just Ray and Bob, right? Because Rhonda's not with us anymore, so.
Is that to me?
So as my mother used to say, you can save those for later. And that's all I have right now, except I would like people to-
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to-
No, no, no. People just to think about any changes is when we have topics that we bring, you bring to yourselves and have a discussion about it.
All right, yes, Mr. Wilson.
I take it that the planner is not going to propose any other zoning, board-initiated?
No, that's not necessarily the case, but I'm just kind of waiting till the 12th.
At this meeting?
At this meeting, no. No, so.
Because I wanted to suggest one, and I don't have it in a formal motion. But I sent the town planner something several weeks ago, and it has to do with many towns are adopting ordinances against having LED advertising signs. Ray Gosny gave us a presentation that talked about how effective it is to have LED lighting or street lighting because it doesn't spread out very much and it tends to be very intense right underneath it. All of us from time to time, in fact, if we've gone over the bridge over the Pema Geosset and headed off towards Holiness, you see there are two gas stations down there, and one of them, the sign that says the price of gas in one of them at nighttime can pretty nearly blind you when you look at it. And that's an example of horizontal LED lighting. So if something is shining down, as Ray described to us, it's good for street lighting because it doesn't spread out much, it doesn't go up much in the air, but it tends to be very intense. And for all those same reasons, it makes it really, I think, dangerous and unpleasant if those are facing horizontally and it's at nighttime and you're driving towards it. So there are lots of kinds of signs that can be lit, but I sent an article to Mrs. Penny recently about other towns in the state that are putting limitations on LED advertising signs.
Yes, Mr. Ross?
I think Plymouth already has an ordinance against neon signs for the similar reason, because they're very distracting.
Right.
So maybe it could be incorporated in something like that.
Maybe so, but LED is far more focused than neon.
I agree, but, you know, flashing neon signs, like the old, you know-
Flashing neon, right.
I know, because when I owned my business on Route 3, you couldn't have one in Plymouth. And the only exception was the little, small, open ones that you see in some businesses. Those were exempt, but a big sign that said, you know, "Here," kind of thing is not allowed in Plymouth.
So that's something that would be in the sign, excuse me, the sign ordinance, so we'd want to tighten that up.
Right.
Okay, great. Anything else on this topic?
I mean, if anybody has any quick ideas right at this point, just because I'm starting to compile a list, but-
I know there were a couple-
I've made notes over time.
Yeah, over the last year or two that I remember, at least. I know I started. Mr. Kelly?
On the zoning of agriculture, I know as far as internal revenue is concerned, they say you have to have, to be classified as being a farmer, you have to have a majority of your income from the farming operation. But I, I'm going to get in trouble with this, but I don't know as far as the classification for zoning for farming. In other words, if you mow some hay, which God put down on earth and allows it to grow, and you don't fertilize it, and you don't do anything to it, but you cut the hay just to keep it open, and then you sell it for X number of thousands of dollars, is that still classified as agricultural land, or would that be classified as commercial land? Because there's a difference between hobby farming and commercial farming. And we seem to have this ongoing discussion about Tenny Mountain Highway being in the agricultural zone. And I'm not too awfully sure, other than a few bales of hay taken off every year, how much actual agricultural there is. There's no big garden farms down there that are making a profit. There's no big cattle farms. There's no big, any type of farm down through there, so I don't-
Well, agriculture entails more than just animals and hay. There's feed stores, there's all different kinds of-
Right, and it's what is allowed. It doesn't have to exist, but the opportunity to do it, that's where the designation comes.
Protection for who does do it. Protection for them to continue to be able to do it and give notice to their neighbors.
If you put down commercial farming, it would be more to the point than just agricultural because if you cut trees and stuff like that, that's a, if you're in the business of cutting trees, that's farming, logging. Or if you're in the business of haying and stuff like that, that's all commercial, commercial operation. And it's different than the little guy that's got a couple of horses on his house.
It's for the production of, I think, that's the word they usually use, which just basically sold commercially.
Yeah, so that, I'm wondering about zoning that all commercial instead of agricultural.
Did you guys already try to train it out there?
I know, I think you have a hard time changing anything in the agricultural zone. This really met us. I'm, just based on past-
There are, the zones vary somewhat. It's predominantly agriculture out there at this point, but there are other zones.
What is agriculture out there?
The zoning is. No, I'm not saying it's de facto growing agricultural products.
But I think that there's more than just mammals and agriculture as far as planting and growing something. There's a lot of other different aspects that's part of agriculture. There's machine shops that farmers need. There's all these different things that all fall within the classification of agriculture.
So machine shops are an agricultural?
Farmers need that.
So-
There's a whole classification. Mr. Miller brought that to our attention about eight years ago.
So General Motors is a farming operation?
International Harvester.
Housing. Farmers live in housing. All different kinds of stuff. It was brought to our attention by Mr. Miller about, like I said, eight years ago, and is very interesting. It's not just animals and growing.
It's like the Sears stores because in agricultural terms, it sells like tractors and stuff like that.
All right, that brings us to item number eight, unfinished other business.
One last thing I would like to say, and that is, in regards to the so-called, I have at Robert Maine Insurance Building, but it's the old building now on Tenny Mountain Highway. We destroyed a building up on Rogers Hill, which is near where Dr. Bentwood lives up there because of safety reasons. Has anybody ever walked into that main building? Because I don't think anybody's been living there for, you know, at least five to eight years. And I don't know that anybody could walk in that building where its floors are rotten.
Is that where Farm Family was, like 20 years ago?
What's that?
Is that where Farm Family was, like 20 years ago?
Farm Family?
Insurance.
Which building are you talking about, John?
It was always, it's in the old house across from Harris Brothers.
It's a blossom. We talked about that already, yeah.
I know we talked about it, but has anybody gone in there to see if there's safety reasons that that should be destroyed? Because you said McKinley owned it, so we can't do a thing about it.
No, I didn't say that. I said he owns it, so I don't think he's going to be renting it out for housing, but that's a question for the building inspector.
Okay.
I wonder if he's gone through it lately.
I don't know. I honestly, it's not my purview. I don't know.
That brings us to item number nine, and there is no public. That brings us to item number 10.
I'll make a motion.
All right, second. All right, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.